Talked about how the process was going to go and what was going to happen, how committees were going to be selected, how reviews were going to be done of applications. Some kind of forum in which they, all the candidates who you were going to interview were brought before this forum, a very public one, an open interview process. And then as it was brought down to smaller numbers, then maybe a private interview process. The fact that you mentioned that all the candidates had to write action plans, but we've heard no details about any of the action plans. What did they write in their action plans? What did the candidate who was finally selected write in her action plan? So how do we know what we're getting? You know, there's one thing that I know very well, and that's educ crap. That's that language of how to talk like an educator without any action behind it. And I think we need to stop and think about the process going forward if nothing can be done about it now. What's going to happen into the first year as she goes in? What kind of review that's going to be there? Where are the members from the general community, not from the PTAs, but from the general population? Where are they going to be involved now in the process of assessing what she does during her first year? Assessing any new principal during their first year? The reputation that you bring with you sticks with you and begins to label the community you go into. If you don't think that all of this that so quote/unquote has been proven to be invalid does not stick with her and will not taint this community, then you're really looking through blinders. Be ready for the fallout. Be ready for the fallout. It's going to come, and I can only hope and pray that it does not taint our students.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Salmon. I live at 212 Grant Avenue in Farmingdale, New York. However, I have close ties to the Baldwin community as my wife graduated from Baldwin High School. Their family is six generations in Baldwin, the Pettit family, some of you may or may not know them. My wife is Jamie, she's their oldest daughter. And my reason for being here today, and I do not feel that it's going to be very well-received, is because I'm an employee at Automotive High School. I have been two years.
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off also. We're not going to talk about individual employees.
I am an employee.
I know, we're not going to talk about employees. It would not be appropriate to deny people the opportunity to talk about employees if they have critical things to say and allow you, this is not the form for us to talk about individual employees in the district.
Okay, well, then, well, then all I would like to say is that Katerina Lafregola, or the employee who cannot be spoken about, is the best principal I have ever worked for. She is hands-down, hands-down, the most attentive, hard-working...
I'm sorry.
Hard-working? I'm sorry, the leadership, the leadership at the school that I work at.
Sir, Mr. Singh, Mr. Singh, as much as I will...
Salmon, salmon like the fish.
I'm sorry, Mr. Salmon. As much as I would love to hear the positive, because I'm all about positive, if we can't talk about negative, we can't talk about positive, we have to be fair.
Okay.
So I appreciate you coming.
Then I will not, I will not speak about Mrs. Lafregola.
I appreciate...
I will not speak about Mrs. Lafregola anymore. Okay? Is that okay? Okay, I will make it fast, thank you. There was an article recently written in the New York Post which has quoted some employees or former employees who were simply not doing their job. A leader at Automotive High School will never say...
Again, sir, when we're not going to...
These people who were, who were quoted, I may be talking about the assistant principal. They would never say that these people who spoke negatively about the leadership, those people who I work for will never bash the people who bashed them. Because the people who I work for care about the students and care about the teaching and learning community where I work, okay? All I need to say then at this moment is Baldwin High School is lucky to have the opportunity to have Mrs. Lafregola employed. Thank you.
Sid Joshua, Exeter Street in Baldwin. If we weren't at 95%, 96%, 97% graduating, going on to Ivy League schools and so on and so forth, maybe I would consider myself lucky. But we're not there, so I'm not interested in that. Dr. Kami is probably just passing through, she just got here, so she probably doesn't give a darn about, you know, the long-term, the long-term ramifications of what this would have on us.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Inside of your comments, if you have a concern, I'm sorry to mean to swallow the mic, or question, but I cannot allow you to publicly bash...
It's not a bash, it just said she's probably not concerned, I don't think that's a bash.
But that's, but...
In any event, the, you know, we, we live here...
Okay, okay.
We're really vested, we're not just passing through, like most of us have been here for more than a year or two. And we'll be here for much longer than that. It's suspicious, to say the least, and mind-boggling as to why Dr. Boulder and Ms. Guerrero...
I'm sorry.
...will look at as APs. The APs, no interim acting AP, capable professionals who are...
I appreciate it, it's okay.
...interested in the community, so I find that suspect. And I also will ask the question, when will there be an opportunity to have a quote/unquote And with respect to, I think a comment I'm hearing about racist comments or something to that effect, I think what I heard was the person claimed that they were unfounded, but was it unfounded by the superintendent who's her cousin or an independent arbitrator? I'm just curious.
Right. Good evening, Antoinette Burrows, 3 Eber Court.
Can't hear you. Talk a little louder.
Okay. Antoinette Burrows, Porter, 3 Eber Court. So I'm very vested in this community as well as the school district. And I'm sorry, I'll say it in advance, I am concerned with the new hire. I'm not going to go much further than that, but I do have, I trust the board to make good decisions. But within that decision, and I've had a couple of conversations, within that decision I think there needs to be clarity on why the decision was made. I think that you could actually cancel out a lot of noise if you do that. So one of the things I believe should be happening is, you know, first, let me ask one question. What is the terms of the contract in terms of, is she two years, is she three years, is she four years? And I think you should be able to answer that.
Principals by law receive a probationary term, they have a three-year probationary term. And during, I'm sorry, it's now four, during that time period they can acquire tenure or not acquire tenure during that four-year period. So it's not a contract per se, they belong to a bargaining unit, they have a collective bargaining agreement with the Administrators Association of Baldwin, but they are on a probationary track and they'll be valuing it at the end of four years or before that.
So is there any possible way that the community could find out what the goals are for this particular principal? So what does she have to meet in effort for her to succeed? So, you know, we've talked about this over the last probably seven years in terms of doing a strategic plan. When you hire someone, you have to have a strategic plan and they have to have goals in effort for them to meet. If you hired her, you know, I'm a little apprehensive in saying that I feel she's a good fit, but I think if the board had anything to do with it, it probably is, you know, they thought it was a good fit. So now I'm asking, what are the goal, what is she being measured by year by year in effort to say that she's doing a good job? Because one of the things I have heard is that in, you know, in her, I don't want to keep mentioning her, but what are the goals that any principal would have to meet in effort to say they are succeeding?
That's a very good question.
Very specific, though.
And a very fair question. So what has happened over the last few years, as you might know, is that the state moved toward a program, a process called APPR, Annual Professional Performance Review. And the way that you review principals and teachers is through this, which is determined by the state. You have a choice of a rubric that is negotiated with each union, and I believe next year we're moving to the Marshall Rubric. So the evaluation of any principal, any principal in the district, is determined by, in part, by the components of the Marshall Rubric. You're welcome to go online, you can Google Marshall Rubric for administrators, it's publicly available. So that is in part the evaluation. The other part of the evaluation comes in the form of a number that we get from the state, and that number is determined by metrics that they use, which include things like performance on state assessments and graduation rate. It's a formula that, we don't know what the formula is, but we get a number from the state at some point in the year. And so the combination of those two gives us what the state collects as their evaluation component. What I can tell you is that in addition to that, the administrator, the central office administrators are in our buildings all the time. I am in the, in the high school all the time. And so part of an evaluation is, is what is happening in that high school. I meet with our students in the high school, I find out lots of information about the things that are going on in the high school. The board has four goals that they, priorities that they have, and this year all of our principals and our other administrators were part of a collective team that took those four priorities and turned it into an action plan. It's not a strategic plan, but an action plan. And in that action plan, it specifies how is the district going to measure and meet those goals. And one of the goals is to improve, you know, our, not per se the graduation rate, but the academic performance of our students. And as an administrative team, we've identified how you, how you define academic performance. What I will say is that the administrative team, every one of the administrators, as well as every one of the teachers and the other staff in this district, they care deeply about the kids, and I'll include myself in that. I care deeply for those kids, and if you doubt that, I tell you to go talk to some of the kids in the high school, okay? Although I don't live in Baldwin, Baldwin has become my family very, very quickly. And we believe in the mission of this district, we believe in the, in the diversity of the district, we believe in the performance of the district. And there's a lot of work and effort that's gone on in the last two years to bring this district to the forefront and to have other districts talking about our district. I will tell you that there is a neighboring superintendent, and I'm not going to tell you who it is, but it is, it is somebody that is revered by many. And that person asked me, can we sit down, can you tell me what you're doing with this new media academy? Because I truly believe that the district, the direction of Baldwin is the direction that all school districts need to take, and that is the combination of K-12, higher ed, and the world of work. And so in some respects, we're sort of trailblazing. I can tell you, without speaking specifically about any individual, there would not be an individual that would go through the vetting process that we did that was not capable of meeting that level of expectation. There is a four-year tenure period. Inside of those four years, whether you are a principal, a supervisor, an assistant principal, a teacher, it does not matter. Within those four years, there's going to be constant conversation, constant visits, constant supervision to make sure that anybody who was hired by this district is meeting the level of expectation that we expect and that is moving this district forward to where we need it to move. We all work together. There would not be an occasion where any one of us would hire a weak link, because you are as only strong, as strong as your weakest link. So without speaking of anyone in particular, because when I say those things, I mean that for any single person that we hire, whether they're a security guard, or a custodial worker, or a teacher, or an administrator, they all have to reach the same standard. Because at the end of the day, it's the kids that matter, and it's the kids that we work for every single day.
That was my three minutes. So I actually honestly trust and believe that, that, that you are very vested in the community. I do. I think when, and I'll say this, I think when you were first hired, there was some, you know, there was a lot of buzz around and I wasn't really sure, but I think first year in, you have done a lot to actually start kind of raising the bar for the Baldwin District. With that being said, I do believe that you've selected someone that you believe is, you know, capable of doing the job. I just think that, again, when we, you know, we go back every year, you know, people are able to look at things and say, well, you know, it wasn't, they don't feel that things were kind of put out front. They don't feel that you're consistent in doing the same things, following the same processes. And I think that all that needs to be done is consistency, obviously, and then you need to sometimes kind of just gently explain why you did what you did and then kind of build on it. You hired, you guys hire people because you feel that they're capable. And, you know, I will say to the people that are, you know, against this is that no one principal does things on their own. There is a team of people that go in, so one principal can't ruin a school. So I get that. But what I will say is that there needs to be benchmarks and measurements for this teacher to reach, and it needs to be open to everyone to know where we're at with this particular teacher, or principal, or whomever. And I think if you keep that kind of, the communication open, you won't really get this.
I know you're cutting me off.
Oh. So you, you really won't get this.
So I appreciate everything you said, and one of the things that if you knew me, you would know that I'm reflective in, in my practice, and I will think about everything you said. The one thing that I think you need to know, and that is so frustrating, I think for all of us, is that there are things that we are not allowed to say by law. And so the frustration that I think we're hearing and the request for, you know, the openness of a process, I think that we can, we can be as open as we are allowed to be, staying within the realm of confidentiality. And, and I know that that makes, that that sometimes feels uncomfortable, but when you're going, forget about schools for a minute, when you're going for a job, any job, you know, you expect that you're, that the process is a confidential process. And when you go for a job, if you go for a job in Citibank, let's say, you go through a very similar interview process, you go through a very similar vetting process, I dare say we probably have a little bit deeper of that vetting process. At no point are the shareholders of Citibank doing the interviews. And that's not to say that our community does not have the desire for the input, nor does it mean that we don't, we don't appreciate or value their input. But, but this is an organization that, that, you know, has a timeline. What I really didn't want to happen is, I really didn't want to start the school year without a principal. And there were, I don't remember the exact number, but there were more than five high school principalships open. And when I tell you that, it is an extremely competitive process across districts. One of the reasons why we got out as early as we did was because we wanted to have the best pool of candidates that we can have. And, and everybody doesn't apply for every position that's out there, but we know that, you know, Syacid and Jericho and Baldwin and Levittown, and everybody's competing with each other for the same pool of candidates. And, and I do believe that we had a thorough process, I do believe that we did the best that we could, I do believe that we got input from the community. I recognize that there is some level of frustration that everybody was not involved in the process, but I don't know any process that does involve anybody, I mean everybody. And so, you know, I do think that we do the best we can. There's a, there's a hierarchy, you hire someone who hires someone who hires someone, and I think that you have to have some faith in the process. I wish that I can speak to the individual commentaries, but it would not be legal and it wouldn't be fair. And so I have had many individual conversations with people, I shared with a group of people, I got a phone call from somebody, I spent 40 minutes on the, on the phone, and it was, I'm looking for the grandmother that spoke earlier, she's gone. She's putting the grandkids to sleep. But I spoke with somebody who called me, who was also a New York City teacher, and she was so upset. I called her on my way home from work on Friday, I spent 40 minutes on the phone with her. And in the 36th minute, she told me that, she's not a Baldwin, she lives in Baldwin and go, and our kids go to Oceanside Schools. At the end of the 40 minutes, she was so relieved and so happy, but what really came out, okay, it was 40 minutes well-spent, but what really came out was that she was a New York City teacher, and she was so disheartened by the, the system in New York City. We are not the system of New York City. Many of us have come from New York City. I started in New York City, and I started in the 600 schools in New York City. My kids came out of jail and psychiatric institutions. Does that mean that I should only ever be able to teach in a 600 school? You have to vet the person, not the place that they're coming from. I do believe, I do believe that she is a good candidate, I do believe she's a good fit. There are other parts of the resume that played a part in the decision. I get the trepidation on the part of the community. What I implore the community is, the New York Post would not be my frame of reference, number one. Let me, I understand, I understand it's a piece of it. The other thing that, that you need to understand is that this quality review that is used in New York City, at best, is a flawed system. And, and without getting into details that, that would be hard for me to do in this, in this forum, I don't believe in the system that they use. I have looked into that data that is used, and I don't believe it's valid or reliable. If I did, we would have a different hire. That's what I can tell you.
Okay, so I, I mean, that's, that's fair. I mean, I, I, I think it's fair, I think that, again, I think some of, some of the damage control, having, you know, probably having PR, probably having someone that can actually kind of give a message out to the community and the public, those things will absolutely help. Because, you know, when you live in the suburbs, you really don't look to, to the city to bring someone in, because it's almost a negative to begin with. And then when you have newspaper articles and, and, you know, all of the other stuff, the ratings and all that other stuff, it, it brings about negative impact, and, and then you have this. So I would just say, moving forward, because she's here, is that you do need to develop something that shows that she has goals or missions, things that she needs to actually, you know, make sure that she's able to accomplish in her time to assess her, or for everyone.
Okay.
I don't think I complimented. Okay.
Okay, back to the board's agenda. Special Services, the Board of Education approves the recommendation for the Services of Committee on Special Education, sub-CE, 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in February, March, April, May 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. Dereska, has names of students that we don't discuss in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Report as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by me. This contains names of students we do not discuss in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mary, you got that, that I was the one to second, okay. Okay. Moving to the business agenda, I'm going to ask, as the board president, I'm calling for consideration of the business items in tonight's agenda as a consent item. This includes businesses, business items six through 10, which are bid items. Bid, right?
Why don't we go through the first five?
Oh, well, let me just do this. Items 22 through 26 and business items 28 through 31. Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and separate vote?
Can you repeat them?
Items six through 10, which are bid items. Items 22 through, 26, special ed. Items 28 through 31, obsolete equipment. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including business items six through 10, business items 22 through 26, and business items 28 through 31?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dereska, second by Mr. Press. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that everyone?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the motion carries. There weren't any items removed, so when we get to those other items, we've already voted on them. Okay, so now I'm going to start the business. Item number one, the Board of Education accepts with thanks a new certificate award from New York State Senator Todd Kaminsky to be presented at a graduating senior majoring in political science, government, or law, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education accepts with thanks from Baldwin Foundation for Education for the 2015-16 school year, $3,509 for the Maxi Grant Program, and authorizes a budget increases of $3,509 in expenditures and an increase of $3,509 in revenues as detailed in the Friday mailing. Grant Title TV Studio Recipient School, Mr. Lee's High School, an amount of $1,596. Classroom to Wild Quail, Ms. Fergino Middle School, Steel, $1,913. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. I think the comments in order, thank you.
Yes.
Anything, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation from the Baldwin Builds in the amount of $5,333.44 for the Brookside Playground renovation, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved.
So moved.
I moved.
Second.
I did.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska, so I moved. Second by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
I'm just going to recuse myself.
No, you don't.
Very much.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You said you were, and you're abstaining?
I'm recusing myself, not abstaining at all.
Okay.
Just recusing myself since...
Okay, all right.
I'm just recusing myself.
She's recusing herself from the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Because my name's on the...
All right, so we have a four affirmative and one recused. Okay. The Board of Education, with thanks, accepts a donation from the Allstate Foundation in the amount of $1,000 for the community service of Agent Yolanda Sullivan. in the amount of $1,000 for the community service of Agent Yolanda Sullivan, to benefit the Brookside Builds Project, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dereska. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments on this?
Thank you again.
Yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Dereska?
Recuse.
Okay. Boy, those are big words. Number five, the Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation from Jacqueline Gaddis, in the amount of $13, to put, to be put toward a Shirley Kovern Award, to bring it up to $100, and to be presented to the senior who has shown exceptional effort in social studies, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. What is all the laughter?
Oh, Jackie's here.
Oh, I thought she was here, but I didn't know she left. So, all together, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddis.
Brookside Builds is here too.
Oh, okay, I'll come back, I'll come back, I'm sorry. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Dereska just pointed out to me that Brookside Builds is here, we did say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are skip, moving on to item 11. Number 11, are you guys with me? The Board of Education approves the renewal of district participation in the non-public school textbook program, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Second by Mr. Press. Are there any comments or concerns on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the renewal of the district's insurance policy with NICE at a fee of $586,541, which is a 1% increase, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the renewal of the district's crime insurance policy with Travelers Insurance Group at an annual cost of $5,841, effective July 1, 2016, at an increase of $40, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the renewal of the student accident insurance policy with AJ Flood QBE Insurance Corporation, also known as JJ Stanis and Company Incorporated, in the amount of $24,917.75.
So moved.
Wait, wait, I didn't finish. With the per student rate unchanged from last year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Now, Mr. Dereska.
So moved.
Miss, moved by Mrs. Dereska. Second by Mr. Press. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I didn't ask if there were any comments or discussion on this item. Anything? No? All right, so let's vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the rates of the CSEA Employee Benefit Fund dental and vision coverage for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska. Any questions or comments on this?